Columbia County Board of Commissioners, public hearing on the 2021 budget to order. Take a little bit of liberty here and go straight into, well, first let me say we have a full quorum, but we're going to go ahead and open in prayer and say the pledge for this meeting as opposed to the next one. So, Mr. Malia, would you open us in?
Thank you. Please bow your heads with me. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful spring day, and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and govern ourselves. Help us as we make decisions today that affect our neighbors, citizens of the county. Some of these decisions are not easy, but guide us to be sure that our actions are based on truth and in fairness. In your name we pray, amen.
Please stand for the pledge. You know, I want to call this public hearing to order, and I'm going to take my right to County Manager Scott Johnson. He's going to walk us through our proposed 2021 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. We have before you tonight a balanced budget presented. This year's proposed balanced budget told, in the general fund, totals $76,960,387. This budget is up over last year, but it is only if you look at last year's revenues versus this year's revenue projections, it's only up .75%, so a little less than 1% over last year's revenues. You can see the way we work through the budget. You have a budget sheet in front of you, and some of the things that have been added and subtracted or deleted since our last meeting. There are a couple of highlights that I want to hit, then I'll turn it over to Ms. Reese. We did, this year in this budget, we did decide to increase our contingency. We wanted a contingency goal of 2.5% as opposed to 2%. We were actually able to surpass that with a 2.79% contingency, right at $2 million. And we did that just to make sure that we were very conservative on our revenue estimates, I'm sorry, very conservative on the expenditure side, just in case we have any sort of COVID-related shortfalls or economic downturn. We did the same thing on the revenue side. We looked at our property tax revenue, and we estimated a conservative 3% increase in our total digest. Feel very comfortable with that number, and looking at historical data and how we've kind of gotten to where we are this year with single-family permits and the population rises the way it is, feel very comfortable with that estimate. But we did decide to lower our sales tax projection. About 25% of our budget is made up of sales tax. We offset property tax with the local option sales tax, and that has been coming in at a pretty steady $1.7 million a month, but instead of budgeting that, we decided to back that down $100,000 a month for a total of $1.2 million, just to make sure that we were, again, being very conservative on our revenue estimates. As far as the departments were concerned, many of our departments came in within 3% of last year's budget, including the salaries that are there, so we thought that was very good, and I want to commend everybody on staff for working so hard there. Just a couple of highlights real quick. There are six new positions in the general fund that we're asking for, 39 promotions and reclassifications, some allowance adjustments. We are looking at a medical plan increase this year. We told our employees last year that if the medical plan continued to take the hits that it's been taking as the cost of health care goes up, that we would have to look at an increase on the employee side, and to increase the employee side, we also have to increase the employer side. So, we have budgeted for that this year as we promised. There is an increase to the county attorney's rate here. There's a retirement package, executive retirement package in this budget. Fleet fund, we had a couple of new vehicles in the general fund, and several replacements, 34 replacements. One thing I was asked to include in this year's budget was a loan to our Performing Arts Center. This is a loan. We're just going to have a little seed money there to get our PAC off the ground. It'll allow us to hire a general manager to work with our consultants to be able to get the new PAC up and running. And then, once that facility starts making money, it'll pay the general fund back this money. We've done that in the past, and we've been very successful with that, so just allow them to have some there. All of our other funds are balanced. I won't go into those unless you have specific questions about them, and I know you may. Some of the notable budget requests that were not included, you already have those, so I will entertain any questions on that side and turn it over to Ms. Reese to talk about the rest of the budget. Questions on that so far?
For on the general manager. (inaudible) sooner than later, just as soon as the budget takes.
Yes, sir. So, yes, sir. If everything goes well, we have our hearing today. We will put the budget in front of you to formally adopt the budget at our second meeting in June, which is 16th of June. Once that's approved and we know that money is in place, we already have a job description. We're already ready to go, so we plan to advertise immediately and then start working on that, and then the funding will be available July 1. So, theory, we could have somebody by July 15th or August 1st, depending on a notice they would have to give wherever they are.
Have clue what kind of stuff?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We actually worked with our consultant, I E., who's been our partner in this entire process. They helped us with the job description, as well as in our office and our HR worked on that job description. But we, they feel like we can do this with this hybrid model that we have in place, where we're not hiring, spending $1 million to hire a company to come in and do this. You know what our deal is with I E., and it's very revenue neutral for us. It's very beneficial for us. We want to keep the staff over there as small as possible, too. So, the idea was we'd hire the general manager, and we think that there may be a need for two additional positions, but we want that general manager to get in place first, be able to help determining who those people are, and just to make sure that we need those people. But whoever we hire will understand Columbia County's model of trying to keep our number of employees.
Any other questions on the budget so far?
You're comfortable with only raising the fund from 2% to 2.5%?
I am. Yes, I think that's, you know, we're extremely conservative. If you go back and look at the last five years of our budget in Columbia County, we have consistently overestimated revenues, and we have consistently underspent our budget, our expenditures. Usually between, underspent between 2% and 3%. I think one year was as much as maybe 4%. And we have underestimated our revenues as high as 9.5% or 9.75%. So, that's been a pretty consistent track record for us. So, we feel like we've done the same thing again here this year, but just because there is concern about COVID and economic downturns and those sort of things, and sales tax, we just decided to add a little more contingency. I will say in my tenure, I can't ever remember dipping into contingency for operational expenses ever. So, I've been here 12 years. Ms. Reese has been here 5 years. So, we don't think we're going to have to, but we are very comfortable with a 2.79% contingency, which is where we're sitting now, a little over 2.5.
Then also with the sales tax, and you brought that down by about $100,000 a month. That's conservative enough?
I think so. You know, we're looking at actuals. I think if you look, again, at historical data, Columbia County was one of the only counties in the state to actually show an increase in its sales tax, and our sales tax was up in the first quarter of this year by 8.9%. We reported that at a committee meeting when we were looking at other AAA counties around the state, and we were the only one that was up that high, which I think is a testament to this community and the quality of life here. If you look at how our sales tax numbers have been rising, they are on an upward trend. And even if they don't get all the way to 8.5% increase or an 8% increase, let's say it's a 2% increase, because, you know, it takes a pretty big, that would be a pretty big hit to knock it down that far. We would still be collecting over the 1.7% that we're collecting today, and we have backed this down to 1.6. So, we feel very good about those estimates.
Other questions?
A few other things Ms. Reese is going to go over, and then we'll sum it up or answer any others you have on the budget.
Open to the public, too.
How we have conservative, basically. What would the chief have?
3%, right?
Mm-hmm. This is the one. (inaudible). Right. That's why we're confident in about that. All of the funds.
And we are balanced in every fund. We have to present you a balanced budget. Sometimes at this point, we're still working on the budget, but at this point...
Questions, comments? A quick question for the chief. You don't have to come up. You can yell from there. So, just from a staffing standpoint, you feel like we're good with the firemen that we have and deliver the service that we need to deliver?
(inaudible).
Right for training, yes. I know it's important to this commission that we support the sheriff and the fire department. I know the citizens pound us for that, so I just want to make sure that you get... Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you mentioned having the budget to us by the meeting on the 2nd, but we will actually adopt this on the 16th, correct? That the schedule, is that how that has to work?
I think in original correspondence, we adopted on the 2nd, but the advertisement is still working on the budget. We pushed that out to the 16th. So, the budget that you have been given in the past from our last budget work session is good if you take the changes on the sheet that you have in front of you tonight and incorporate those changes into that budget. There are no other changes. All your personnel is still the same. If there are any specific questions or any area that you want to target in on, I mean, you realize that it's a lot. We're talking about multiple departments, 30 different funds, and $195 million worth of budgets all the way across the county. Tough to get into all that, but, and me giving you all that, but certainly if you have any questions about anything, call us, and we'll go through it with you.
No, I was just asking about the factual, because of the posting, we will actually have to post this almost a month from now. Not going to be able, or will we be able to do it the next meeting?
No.
No, it has to be the 16th.
Because of the advertising.
Right, that's what I mean. So, that was following the technical logistics. That's all I was asking about. Even though, even though we'll really be done by our next meeting, what you give us will probably be a pretty final product.
That's correct.
We have to wait until the 16th to adopt.
Right. Minus your changes or public input that has us change this budget, this budget will not change from now to the 16th.
That requirement of not approve by July 1st or whatever, all the...
Not for us. Hours.
Some of the COVID changes, changes some of our reporting. Gave us a little extra time on our reporting, but as far as adopting your annual budget, it has to be done July 1.
Johnson, is there a question for accelerating debt service if our collections exceed?
So, if you'll, not necessarily in this one. I know that we do have a millage rate assigned to our debt service here, and we also are paying debt service on the SLOTH side as well with sales tax money. I believe that we adjusted the millage rate down on that. It was a full mill, but because the digest went up, instead of accelerating that payoff, we actually went down on the millage rate. So, the taxpayer benefited from that. The good thing about it is we're AAA credit, so, and I don't know about the prepayment penalty. Is there a prepayment on that one?
I don't.
Call date.
I would have to check.
We'd have to check and see if there may be a call date on that bond that we can't do it before that. But again, so, we benefited from, instead of paying more and paying it off faster, we just passed the savings on to the citizens because we went from a 1-mill levy to a .89-mill levy.
Third lowest in the state, right?
Our general fund, I'm sorry, our M&amp;O millage rate is the third lowest in the state.
Two more places to go, brother.
That's right. It's going to be tough to get in front of Fayette County because they have this big movie studio there and all the sales tax they get off to set their property tax. And the other issue that you have to contend with there is Fayette County is, unincorporated Fayette County operates, but then the city of Fayetteville and their other cities also carry a lot of their load, a lot of their burden for them. So, that's half of their population. We don't have that luxury here.
On the surface, we do look comparable, but in reality, those cities are huge.
We're providing a lot more service than that county is providing, yes.
That discussion has been had.
Well, I just want to take the opportunity to compliment you, Scott, and working with constitutional officers. We're getting to the point where, in my term, this is my fifth budget, I think, and there's always been, we always start out really high, but you guys work together, the requests are up here, but you guys work together really well to bring that down and always have a balanced budget. And the relationships that you guys have with the other constitutional officers who have to fund their operations are to be commended, to be commended for what you do.
Absolutely. I'd like to second that, and to those gentlemen that are here tonight that are seeking this office, you will learn, there is nowhere else in the state of Georgia where the relationships exist between the constitutionally elected officers. Commission, the staff of our county is second to none. It is staggering the difference between us and the other counties in regards to how our relationships work together, and I could not be more proud of everyone in our county for pulling together to keep that process going. And that is why, in my opinion, to a large extent, we are as successful as we are, and in no, no small part due to everybody's efforts work together. Thank you all.
Comments? Well, this is a public hearing. The opportunity for the public to come up and make any comments or ask questions? I like you.
(inaudible).
Sir? My home county, so I'm not going to go there.
(laughing).
Well, I think, we talked about budget calendar. Is there anything else we need to discuss, or is this, call this public hearing to an end?
You're fine if, as long as you don't have any other questions. And again, we'll be available to talk about anything. Don't plan to change anything. If one penny gets moved, notified, and we'll have it in writing, but...
Well, I'm going to officially rule this hearing closed, and we'll have 10 minutes before we start the commission meeting.
What do we got? We got budgets or two packets?
Hmm?
Oh, no, okay.
Nineteenth, twenty twenty. Having dispensed with the invocation and the pledge, also, we have a full roll call. I'm gonna go straight to the minutes approval from May the fifth. Have them in your package. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept the motion to do so.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Have one addition to the agenda. Covid nineteen antibody testing agreement with AU, which is deal with at the very end of the meeting. And just want to welcome everyone here to the meeting. I have two candidates here. Mr. Bob Willis. Bob, welcome. Mr. Don Skinner, welcome, Don. Thanks for attending. Always like to see people running for office, come to the meetings and getting dialed into the issue. Thank you, thank you for being here. We do have one person who's requested to speak. Mr. Fred Mueller. Mueller, if you want to come up, come on up and speak now. Now is your time. You'll just approach the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Mueller. I live at seven thirty-two Reynolds Road, Grove Town, Georgia. Excuse my hat, I haven't had it, been able to find a good barber with a six-foot-long scissors. So, that's why I have my hat.
Your excuse, sir.
Anyway, I represent people living on Reynolds Road, which is off of Riceborough Road. We have a lot of traffic problems there. Not too long ago, the subdivision was approved last, under Ron Cross. They've been busy working on it, but we're having traffic problems. Reynolds Road is a country road, it's one lane. And a lot of people use Reynolds Road to have a shortcut to the fort, which I understand. But it's getting to a point where it's dangerous. It's fifty, it's thirty-five miles an hour. And we only had two signs. And I requested Joe Eviti of the sign department to put up two more signs, which he did, and I want to give him credit. So, people cannot say we did not see the sign. So, between the beginning of Reynolds Road and the end of Reynolds Road, before it gets to Cooper Road, there's four signs. Two on this side and two on that side, they're about fifty yards apart, so they can't say we didn't see it. I've also asked Captain Andy Shad to do something about it, because people fly up and down, up and down that road. It's very dangerous. There's a hill, and then there's a curve. One of these days, somebody's gonna get hurt. And I'm, I'm the kind of person, I like to let people know we have a problem. It's just like Boeing with the airplanes. You remember the two crashes? If somebody would have listened to those people, we wouldn't have had two crashes, and Boeing would not be in the position that they're in. So, as a citizen living in Columbia County, I feel the responsibility to let the commissioners know we have a problem. And I represent the people on Reynolds Road to do something about it, so that's why I'm here. Also, I asked if there was any changes being made in that area, and I talked to Will Butler, who's with the planning division, and he said there is a plan to improve the corner of Reynolds Road and Riceborough Road that was approved on September thirteenth, twenty nineteen, which will make it easier for people to make a left turn on Reynolds Road, because we have a lot of traffic. And to get out of Reynolds Road is very difficult, especially when there's traffic all the way. And the other thing I would like to ask is, when will Riceborough Road be widened? Okay? Now, we have a splosh plan, and I'm hoping the money that is going to be collected under splosh might be used for that, because it's a safety situation. And I've already looked at the Vision twenty thirty-five, which talks about growth and making sure that we control the growth, and the growth doesn't control us, okay? So, and also, recently, there're gonna be a Gateway Boulevard, which is gonna end up on Riceborough Road. We're gonna have more traffic that's gonna be dumped onto Riceborough. I say dumped, because we have too many people as it is already. So, we're gonna have more traffic problems. People are gonna get off of Gateway Boulevard, make a left on Riceborough Road, and make a right on Reynolds Road. So, that's gonna increase the traffic flow. And another problem is the subdivision that's being built, used to be a farm, Mr. Reynolds used to own that piece of property, Mrs. Reynolds, she's now Mrs. Wiggins. And there was an agreement as far as the entrances, and there was a lot of bickering going on. If I remember right, it was supposed to be an entrance on Riceborough Road with acceleration lane and a de-acceleration lane. That's off the list now. Now, as we stand here, there's only one entrance to that subdivision, which is now called Wright's Farm Development. When big vehicles come out of that subdivision, many big vehicles that are land movers, people when they come up the hill cannot see that. If somebody's trying to pull out, and they're doing sixty, seventy miles an hour, they're gonna get killed. And my question is, how many deaths does it take before something is done about it? So, I would like the commissioners to, either with the planning or zoning or traffic control, to go out there and look at it. I've already asked the captain to have his people monitor that road. Twice, I've called him to put a radar out there. They've had the radar out there, evidently, the people don't see the radar. They're still flying down their seat. Got one guy on a motorcycle, I call him Evel Knievel. He can rev up that motor, go down the road, come back up the road, he's doing seventy, eighty miles an hour, you know, and that's real dangerous. So, so, I believe in prevention. And if we can do something before somebody gets killed, I think that's the right thing to do. And also, there's gonna be a zoning meeting, I think, on Thursday for a piece of property next to Riceborough Road and Gateway Boulevard. And so, you're gonna have more traffic. And I don't mind growth, but growth has to be controlled. There's gonna be, I believe, a shop there, a pump station, and maybe a restaurant. And so, I like to make sure that whoever builds there doesn't hurt or make it more dangerous for the intersection. And they're gonna put a light there, which is gonna help a lot. So, that's my main question, my main concern. So, there's an old saying, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. So, I think Ron Cross did a good job while he was here. And also, I hope, Mr. Duncan, you can keep doing the same job, because I was talking to a gentleman in the back, and he said, one thing we have good going with Columbia County, we have good schools. Both of my children went to school in Columbia County, they graduate, graduated, now they're adults in Columbia County, and giving back to the county. Okay? So, one is an attorney, and one works for a local cable company. And as that gentleman, Mr. Allen, said, I applaud this commission, people working together, because every time I see Richmond County, it's a joke, you know, where you people do a good job to take care of, like, the budget and things like that. And we, as citizens and constituents, appreciate what y'all doing on behalf of the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, thank you very much. It's a testament to the people, the work that people do, and that, I have heard a few things about this, and of course, as we approve things along the way there, I could see that there was gonna be a problem. I might ask Mr. Slockner to weigh in. Somebody might have told you about Riceborough Road being a state road in two thirty-two?
It becomes a state route in Grove Town.
Yeah, it's, it becomes a state route in Grove Town. Okay. So, it's on our, I haven't, I haven't heard that much about it, which is a testament that people are responding.
Matter of fact, it's District Four, that's your district, right?
Sure.
Okay, so, if you can make sure that the people do something about it, will be very much appreciated. Because I've been there, I bought property in the early eighties, built a home, my kids grew up in school, so I've been here a long time, and I obey the laws, I follow the speed limits. But evidently, people, a lot of people don't, and I'm concerned, my neighbors are concerned, I'm speaking on their behalf. And, and I'm worried that with the new building of that subdivision that's being built, there's gonna be two hundred and ninety units there. If you average two cars roughly, five hundred cars coming out of one entrance or departure early in the morning and late in the afternoon, it's gonna be a mess. And I unfortunately live on that road. So, if you can do something about it, we will definitely appreciate you.
Well, I appreciate it.
And you might be a commissioner for a long time.
If you want to be.
Well, I have talked to my wife about that, but as Mr. Allen mentioned, we don't have a people who are better at approaching the problem and listening to it.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Slockner, if you could get with Mr. Mueller after the meeting, maybe you could, I think we have some answers to what you're, and he can bring up and discuss it with you after the meeting.
Okay, because I've got a, Will Butler showed me a plan that's going to be used for the corner of Reynolds Road and Riceborough Road.
Yes, sir.
That was approved on September of last year. So, you are doing something about it, but that's just part of starting a long-term fix.
Yes, sir.
So, but you need to continue on that fix, because it's gonna get worse, especially with two hundred and ninety units in one subdivision with one entrance.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
There is an entrance, there is an entrance to the back of that neighborhood. That was, sir, there is ability to go out through Kingston also, that was a requirement of that rezoning.
I believe they, the last time I was at a meeting, they agreed not to allow.
I don't think so.
Do you remember that?
Law discussion, I believe.
Yeah, a whole year's worth.
This, this commission required that connection through Kingston.
Yes, we did, yes, sir. The, the planning commission that you might have been to, or you might have heard of, might have allowed them to forego that, but it came before us for the final vote, we did require that second action.
Okay, so, they can go out the other way?
Yes, sir.
Exit?
I'll get the approved plan to make sure I share it with you.
Okay, I appreciate that, because if we don't do-
Already solved one of them, what's next?
What, sir?
We already, there's one solved, what's next?
Okay. Well, I appreciate being able to spend time and talking to y'all about this. We, many people are concerned, and they've lived on Reynolds Road a long time, we got the Dents, we got Mr. Cummings, we've got Travis and Campbell, Mr. Cooper is the next road, he, he lives on the corner, and matter of fact, his, his wife is real sick, just a side thing, but we've lived there a long time, and we like to see the community stay like it is as long as possible. But unfortunately, growth is something that comes automatic, but like I said, if you don't control the growth, it will control you. Okay? That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you, it's been, everything on the agenda, been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda, so if unless you have any questions, I will accept them all as one vote.
Motion to accept.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Right to the debate agenda, we're gonna go to Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve the amended lease agreement with Crown Castle for the North Evans as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
This is a new easement, their current easement actually runs through our parking lot, and they're in the process of replacing a lot of lines. Instead of them digging up our parking lot to replace those lines, we worked out an alternate route down Government Center Way. Government Center Way is not a right-of-way, which requires this easement agreement. Driver has reviewed it all, and he's-
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Mr. Malier.
I make a motion to approve the Columbia County Board of Education to use the Evans Town Center Park for high school graduation ceremonies and to waive all the fees for the year.
Second. Discussion? Just want to be clear, so everyone understands, that this is a board of education event. Our level of involvement is simply to allow them use of facility charge. You'd like to speak to that, sir?
Well, we are more involved. I- Right, yeah, we're a little more involved in that. They are using some of our equipment, and we want to make sure that we keep the venue as safe as possible, so that we are doing other things to make sure that they're in compliance with the governor's order. But it is a board of education event, they will be handling traffic, they're working through the sheriff's office, they're doing all that, we're just gonna make sure our venue's prepared.
Their decision to have this event.
It is their decision, they, they came to us with this and, and asked, you know, to be able to do the event here, and as you know, they usually do it at the James Brown Arena. They're very interested in, in trying to keep it in Columbia County, so there, this is gonna be a good trial run.
Works out, I surely would like, I know we don't have a say, but I'd surely like to be able to work with them so they could keep it in the county, if possible do that.
Superintendent, I've had those discussions, so, and we appreciate the, the board supporting this, and I know their board appreciates it, so I think, I think it's a really good working relationship there, I think we could-
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the Covid nineteen antibody testing agreement with AU Health Systems, Inc. I wonder, on the agenda it says Vovid nineteen, but the motion is for Covid nineteen.
Renaming that virus out here.
Branded it.
Second. Any discussion, or has everybody read enough in the press? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Legal matters. Request for review by committee. Any other public comments or participation? Don? Point up, please.
This is a first for me, so- You're the drill, Don.
I just want to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to-
Put your name and address with the record.
Don Skinner, from District Two. Like to mention-
Your address.
My address.
For the record, you've gotta list your address.
Eight sixty-seven Tyler Parkway, Grove Town, Georgia, three oh eight one three. Looked like I'd learned that from a zoning.
There you go, yes, sir.
But I didn't, evidently. I'd like to say, you know, we talked about how great our county is, and I a hundred percent agree. Over the years, I've served on a lot of boards, and part of what makes the county great is the staff. Our county has an excellent staff and employees that help us every day on this county. Next important thing to me is leadership, not followers, but leadership. This committee, I want to applaud y'all. The leadership is great, I'm very pleased with what I see every meeting I come to, and y'all are what makes the county great, the people, citizens. And let's hope we can keep it that way, and I appreciate your public service.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Don.
I don't, I don't mean to beat a dead horse on the Reynolds Road over there, but-
Oh, my goodness.
Richmond County line is, is-
About four thousand feet?
It's, so, so, most of that is in Richmond County, isn't that correct?
Just past the county line, I believe you hit a intersection. That road, the road network is majority of the county, but Reynolds Road itself is area end of it.
Okay, but all the improvements that we put on as, as a part of that rezoning, because it was, it was a lot of question there, none of that has, you're gonna get the plan, but all of that is still in place.
Yes, sir. Place, I've actually been out there and stood on the intersection where the left turn lanes are going. Left turn lanes are going into Gateway Boulevard, the commission approved tonight the agreement with the helper of the pump shop, but left turn lanes in there, so left turn lanes are coming.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Have one executive committee item, I believe.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve eighty-three, eighty-three thousand two hundred dollars to Charles Sullivan, partial thirty-one, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to Willow Lake Association, Inc., partial sixty, eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to Linda and Roy Kason, partial sixty-seven, six thousand three hundred dollars to S F R E S one LLC. dollars to F R E S One LLC, Parcel One Oh Three, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the SR twenty-eight, very widening project.
Second.
Matt, how many more?
Down about twenty-four now. We're getting close.
Some big ones. Do we have?
The hard ones.
Have a lot more like this, or?
Kind of nations. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe that covers it. Our next meeting is June the second, six p.m. Right here. Any other motions?
Chairman, I'd like to, uh, motion.
Second.
Favor, raise your right hand. Adjourned.